Our day, everybody. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance from the twenty?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and welcome to the October second, two thousand and twenty-three Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for ZBAA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBAA present here this evening. Myself, Chairman Alan Donlin, Vice Chairman Mr. Carl Hinger, our Secretary, Ms. Janet La Forge, Regular Member Commissioner Lisa Temple, Regular Member Commissioner Nahid Kaiser, Alternate Member Commissioner, Mr. Richard Briggs is with us this evening. Absent this evening is Alternate Commissioners Elijah Hewling and Commissioner, Alternate Commissioner Larry Rushman. But with us this evening is our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fran Lally, and our always excellent and wonderful recording Secretary, Ms. Cassandra Varian. The current agenda can be found here at the table or on the town website under Board Meetings. When we begin the public hearing, I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call a property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the Secretary will read into the record any communications we've received in favor or opposed to the application. The Chair will then entertain questions of clarification from board members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we have gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of this meeting and will deliberate an open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the Board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application, and in view of time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. You are welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the Land Use Office in the morning. Okay, first thing on the agenda is we're going to review the September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three minutes. Can I take a motion to approve the minutes, please? So do I have a second?
I have a second.
Is there any discussion?
Not really.
Any discussion?
I guess a year or so.
Commissioner Briggs, would you like to say anything for Commissioner La Forge if this on the notes?
Sure.
Do you have anything on them, sir?
I don't.
Commissioner?
No.
Okay. Just a teeny tiny bit, so almost perfect. Line one-one-six. I did not see the hardships on there. This was, um, what was the application? Z dash twenty-three dash forty, sure. Um, the hardships, which were the two front yards, the two easements, which were the Conservation easement and the driveway easement and the septic. I wanted to add that, please. The next one is...
Well, it's a dog.
Tell them a line, tell them a line. So it's easy for them.
Line one-one-six. Yeah, we spoke about it usually right after the, um, the vote on it is where it listed.
Yeah, I mean, it says on one oh seven.
One oh seven. I mean, I close the line explaining to the board.
Yeah, they...
Yeah, it's two fun, yeah, that's two of them. Now we have them all.
No, ninety-three, ninety-four also says, but I guess it's, you know, that was a property owner.
God's estate.
Okay. Um, well, I kind of have the same thing on line one forty-five, unless somebody else sees it. I s- I saw topography and unique shape of property, but I reviewed the, uh, video, and we also had the wetlands on there and the septic as well. So it had four hardships. And then line one sixty-six. I don't think I saw the hardships at all in the hardships. Property location of Lee's Village and Septic System Pre-System. Okay, it's not that, but also the septic preserve. And that's it, it's perfect. Okay, um, take a motion to approve as amended?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, so first, and only case in the hearing tonight. Uh, oh, Minutes of Boards and Commissioners, anybody have anything on them? Nothing on them? Uh, continued public hearings or non-public hearings? First application, our only application this evening, is Z dash twenty-three dash fifty-two. That's Twenty Station Road, Alan Rothman, ten Julia Lane Suite, one oh three, Cold Spring, New York. Request for variance three dot one four F and three dot one four G will leave a density requirement for property in the TCD zone. Would the applicant, if you're performing, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Alan Rothman.
Tell us about your case in detail, sir.
For Brookfield Village, um, Station Road LLC. Um, the address is ten Julia Lane, uh, Cold Spring, New York. It's properties that we were talking about is at Twenty Station Road, Brookfield, Connecticut. So I was here in front of this board a few months ago, and at the time I said we would have fifty-eight to sixty-one. It's in the application of from a few months ago, fifty-eight to sixty-one apartments. Um, and I asked for a few variances, and they were granted. And, um, I understand now that I was supposed to ask for a density, um, density variance also. We will have sixty apartments, which is beyond the density requirement, but it's the same project we talked about before. I had a group, a range of fifty-eight to sixty-one, and I even at that time I said it would probably be sixty apartments. Well, we've decided on sixty apartments. That's what the architect drew out, sixty apartments. So, um, so, um, it's the same, if you remember, Twenty Station Road is a contaminated lot. Um, I understand that the contamination now goes down three hundred feet. Um, we would, we have a grant from the state with along with the town. We applied with the town for a grant for one point two, and we were granted one point two million dollars to clean up the site. Um, it's a substantial cleanup. Um, and, um, and so, um, the condition, one of the conditions we have is to provide housing, and sixty units is what we have down for the number of units. Um, and the hardship is, there's a, um, a side lots area, um, related to, it's a small lot, has lots of wetlands, and, um, so it's a difficult site. But the big reason for this hardship is safety. We, this is a way to clean up the lot. If we don't clean up the lot, it's already, the plume hat is migrating. It's, it's already off the lot. Um, the, um, the, um, tie and bond, that's the town's, um, LEP, has said, the, the secret to doing this is you have to clean up the, you had the, the drawing up there, but there's hotspots. You clean up the hotspots, they're going to go down fifteen, fifteen feet, remove the soil for a big area where the hotspots are, and over a period of about ten years, the land will clean itself once the hotspots are gone. This is a, um, a lot that's the, um, the contamination occurred forty, fifty, and fifty to fifty years ago. Um, it was dry cleaning fluids. They, um, they went into the soils. Um, they had a terrible system. And, um, and it, so this is the opportunity to clean it up. If we don't do this, who knows when the next time there'll be a cleanup available? The funding will be available and there will be a cleanup. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, sir. So you said the, the contamination goes down three hundred feet?
That's what the LEP said on a call with the DECD on Tuesday.
How do they determine that?
Um, they have equipment that, that looks, but there's bedrock there.
Right.
And the real fear is if this migrates to the aquifer, it could damage the water supply for thousands of people.
Yeah, yeah. And the, and the, and, but digging down only fifteen feet will then hit, I guess, the major...
The hotspots, but then they will put chemicals down into the bedrock to, to, um, neutralize the, the chemicals, the, the dry cleaning chemicals.
Um, this time I'm going to ask the Secretary if we have any correspondence.
No, we do not.
Thank you. Uh, do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Uh, I just want to clarify, just want to make sure. So the reason this wasn't included on the last application?
Yeah, it was my mistake.
Just didn't oversay it.
Yes, purely my, my mistake.
Okay.
I'm not that experienced.
That's fine, I was just like, oh wait, why didn't I ask to this last?
Yes, you should, you should have.
I remember you mentioned sixty units.
Yes, correct.
I remember we talked about the sixty units.
And the application did say fifty-eight to sixty-one, but I said it would probably be sixty.
Um, Mr., um, Mr. Worth, can you explain to me what the density variance is? I've looked it up and it's kind of all science to me.
So there's a formula for that. So when I did the application, I figured it out, but it, we, there's, um, it's, it's twelve units per acre, but you get, is that right, Fran? But you get a bonus because there is affordable housing.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's just the back, background. The state granted, even though there's a moratorium on affordable housing, the state granted an exception for this one case. It's for the affordable housing, because that's one of their requirements to get the grant. So there's twenty percent, um, of, of the, um, units are, will be affordable, and that bumps it up to eighteen per acre. Am I correct, Fran?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And this is two acres, so thirty-six.
Yeah, it's two point three acres. So it's actually, um, then you have to sub, do a subtraction for wetlands. So there is a subtraction in there, too.
Yeah, it was the formula that came up and I'm going, oh.
Yeah.
The other eighty percent are of market rates or anything?
Correct. And the twenty percent, Alan, are, they are eighty percent of AMI, so they're not typical of fifty and sixty. This is, people have to earn basically about a hundred thousand a year in salary to get these affordable units.
You can earn that much to get an affordable unit?
Yes. So the, there's a, it's based on housing size. So for three people households, it's about a hundred thousand, a hundred and one thousand dollars you have to earn. You're, or less, you can earn less.
Right, um, up to, up to a hundred thousand.
Up to a hundred one thousand. Which were a family of, I can't remember if three or four. When that question came up, when we had the session for the town, and I had all that information in front of me at the time, and I, I explained that to the group that was there, who were at that meeting.
Right, right. Um, Mr. Worth, is, I'm sorry, does anybody want to? There's not going to be any danger for those who are renters in the building?
Correct. So, uh, on, the, the construction will require, first of all, we, after the cleanup's done, there has to be, um, an LEP to evaluate everything. But then when the construction is done, there will be materials underneath the building to protect about against, um, chemicals coming up. And they're, they're probably, it will have to be designed, but there's probably going to be a system underneath to blow the air out also.
So it'll never leak, I mean?
So there's nothing to leak. The, 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 the hotspots will be removed, then this barrier's put in, and then, uh, it's like, um, I don't know if you know what, um, like, um, the, the, for the gas, the gases, they have these fans underneath the buildings.
Methane, butane, carbon dioxide, gases like that.
I'm talking about radon, actually.
Radon.
It's more like a radon, uh, be, basement system. So that is in, that's actually, the radon basement system's part of the application, and I think it was at thirty thousand dollars for that system. But that's not including the barrier. The barrier's not in the, um, the grant.
Any other follow-up on that? I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I'll apologize in advance for just being thorough, sir. Um, the first one is just, please explain, and I've read through your hardships really well. Please explain the financial part, I'd like to break it down, if I could, the financial part first, uh, of your hardship in detail.
Okay, so the most of it's a safety, because we're getting this grant. But to get the grant, we, this is the DECD, which is a development economic, it stands for an economic, I don't, the E is for economic. It's, they want to get a return, the state wants to get a return on their investment. So this will turn into, one is they want, and they want residential units. So the har- the hardship is, financially is, they wanted this, this to make money to give taxes to this to Brookfield. Now, Brookfield hasn't collected taxes on this property in at least three years, and there's, they owed about a hundred, almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars in life fees. So this would be a whole new system, a whole new, um, project. Um, it'll probably be roughly two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in taxes, real estate taxes. So that's what, part of the grant. They want units, and they want economic return for their investment. They're investing one point two million dollars, the state is.
All right, um, my question is this, we're the Zoning Board of Appeals, we're, we're quasi-judicial, and we have to follow the laws and the statutes and all the citations in the state of Connecticut. So I have one, everybody here has kind of seen it before, but Lawrence v. Dupont. I just want to go over a couple of quick things and read it to you, okay? And this is one of those citations under eight six. Let me make sure I get them over here. Okay. Is this the one? I think this is number two. They're not number... Okay, this, um, what is this?
If I can, if you're saying is it can't be financial based?
Well, I just wanted to read a specific, I don't, I'm not going to take the time to read the whole thing, and this is just a...
I'll give you, it's, 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 it's not supposed to be financial based. But we don't get a grant and the safety is at jeopardy of the residents of Brookfield if we don't clean it, if they, if their slot's not cleaned up.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm not going to read the whole thing, just this one part. So, uh, proof of exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship is absolutely necessary as a condition precedent to the granting of any variance. A mere economic hardship or hardship that was, uh, self-created, however, is insufficient to justify a variance. And neither financial loss nor the potential for financial gain is a proper basis for granting a variance.
Correct. So I don't argue with that at all.
Okay.
It's a safety issue. And also, because we can't get the grant, and we don't own this property, and we don't want to own it until, um, till we get some of these issues out of the way.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much. Um, before my next question, I just want to state for the record, I'd like to put everything from the prior meeting and everything that had to do with Twenty Station Road into the record, just so that it's there in case we have to refer back to it in closed deliberations. I just wanted to do that and state it. Um, here's the other part, you kind of spoke about it a little bit earlier. Um, and I'd like to see whatever paperwork or data that you have, but please explain the cont- contamination part of the hardship in detail. I'm trying to stick with just the hardship here.
Okay, so for decades, for probably from nineteen seventies to maybe up to ten years ago.
Dry cleaner, straight.
Dry cleaner. And they had a very poor, poor quality system, and it would leak all over the place. And I don't know, maybe they even were dumping it. And we'll find that out later. We don't even know the extent of all the, all the contamination. So it's, and, um, dry cleaning fluids, um, are been linked to cancer, and there is a cause of Parkinson's disease. Um, the guy just, um, the, the plume is going generally north, northwest, and the guy in northwest died a year ago from cancer. Could it be this? I don't know. But this is deadly material.
Correct me if I'm wrong, um, the last meeting you were in front of, and I think his name was Mr. Govan, Earl?
Yes.
Govan. Um, okay, he was explaining, and I asked him a couple of questions, but he said that there were three hotspots. One was the original dumping of the dry cleaner fluid or whatever. The other one was the oil tank, and the other one was road runoff? Is that correct?
That's correct. But the other two are easily handable.
The road runoff and the oil tank?
The oil tank, no, it's, well, the oil tank, you know, you pay, that's an oil tank, you have to dig it up, but it's going to be dug up anyway because the dry cleaning fluids. But yes, there are other hardships, other chemicals besides dry cleaning fluids, correct?
Okay, next question. So, uh, when you were in front of wetlands, and I know we did bring this up before, that's why I wanted to put that in the record. But at the second time in front of, uh, wetlands, I wish Mr. Govan was here, because I'd asked him the question directly. Uh, he's an engineer or?
No, he's an architect.
Okay, he's an architect. All right, um, he said, this was the second inland wetlands meeting on, uh, March thirteenth. Um, let's see, it took a little, it took a, took a little bit better look at it, so they, they basically said, hey, there's less contamination here, we thought, but this was at the second meeting. They took a little bit better look at it, and it's not quite as bad as we thought. The hotspots were what I just went over with, the oil tank, the road runoff, and, um, the original spill, the guy from the dry cleaner people.
Okay, it's not a spill. The dry cleaning fluid had a system?
Yeah.
Where they would just go around and then, but the tanks were like leaking like sips.
It's a leak.
So it, and it happened for decades.
And that's what got in there. Uh, so anyway, so that was the second wetlands meeting. He had found less than what they originally thought. And then at the third wetlands meeting, that was on March twenty-seven, Mr. Govan stated that we shrunk the amount of wetlands, I think he was talking to the chairwoman there, uh, the wetlands to service because the contamination was not as bad as you thought.
So...
Now, my, my question is, here's my question.
In this corner?
Yeah.
He, uh, no, it's this corner. You can keep it as green and not touch this. Okay, so this area, we didn't have to touch because, um, because we, it, um, it looked like, um, that wetlands would not have to be disturbed. Well, it's really, there's wetlands over here. So go ahead.
Well, so my question is this, do you, do you have, I know you quoted some data, but do you have anything in writing on the data? Whoever gave you that number report, did they give any in writing?
Town commission the report, um, about three years ago, three or four years ago, and that's what we're relying on.
Okay.
And so, and that was through a grant. They spent about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for people to go out, engineers to go out.
You don't have to have a copy of that report?
No, I, I don't have a copy, never had a copy.
Okay.
Um, but Greg Dombowski, and there's one across the hall. Um, has it in the, across the hall, it's, it's located. So that's the town's, not our, report. Um, and so they, they do his samples. But when they did the samples, they did basically this area. They didn't do anything over here. So the current engineer is saying, hey, you know, there could be issues there.
What was that amount you mentioned earlier that you got to dig down?
Three hundred feet. No, we don't dig down three hundred feet, we dig down fifteen, fifteen to the bedrock.
Fifteen feet, but then all the hotspots are?
They have a, the plan is for a pretty large area, but it's not the whole lot. So it's, let's say, um, you know, if we go to your screen, you have that picture, because it's really behind...
Yeah, the, the Google Earth one?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Because that actually, I can see, show you where the exact, the business, the building exists now and where the hotspots are.
Absolutely. Are you going to go on a street level or just pull it over?
Um, you have one like from above.
Wait, hold on a second.
So the sky view.
How do I get a, let's go back.
Yes, that's a good picture of what it looks like. That's a nice sunny day though.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, blue, blue skies too.
Yes.
All right, how do I, yeah, let me just do searching and see if it will fly up in the air.
And I could live with that, anything you bring up.
It's coming, we're flying it. All right, and I can zoom in on it, you tell me when to stop. That, come on. Yeah, just use the plus minus.
Okay, that's actually good enough.
I'm trying my best, but...
So you see where the bend is? So where that red mark is, behind, on top of that,
Okay.
is, is the area behind the building. So someone's right in the building, because, yes.
I can get in a little, so...
So if you put the hand on the back of the building?
Yeah.
That's, so the, the, the system was in the back of the building.
Okay.
And the system went underground behind the building, as far as I know. I don't really know exactly how the system went, yes. So there's hotspots all over that area. So underneath the building?
Where's the oil tanks, man?
It was, it was next to the building. No, I think it was at a different location. I don't really remember, it might have been where their, your hand is now.
Okay.
But, um, so it was next to the building, the, the oil tank.
Okay, so it's random, so you have to go down, need to dig down?
So twelve to fifteen feet to get the bedrock,
Mm-hmm.
to remove a fairly large amount of soil, and then they'll put chemicals in the bedrock.
Yeah, seal it?
No, to actually, um, counteract the, the chemicals.
It's all science.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, but you don't have, uh, that, that one data of whatever THC and stuff like that that was in there? You don't, you don't physically have that, right?
No, but it's considered extremely high.
Thank you, sir. Um, a couple of other questions. Um, in, in our packets and stuff, normally when we get things in front of us, we'll, we'll get a whole lot of stuff. But I don't see in our packets any traffic studies, uh, total cars.
Okay, traffic studies are not required because it's not on federal road.
Okay, uh, parking needs, septic...
Okay, parking, parking, um, we've gone through, I know that's more of a zoning commission,
Mm-hmm.
but we're required to have ninety spaces. We'll have at least, I think it was one oh one spaces.
Okay, one oh one.
Actually, let me add, let you know what exactly it is.
Sure.
Um, we'll have one hundred and two parking spaces, ninety are required.
Okay. Um, do you have an approval from the WPCA for your project?
No, they're, they have a moratorium. I don't know if you realize, but this cleanup's going to probably take a year, and it could even take two years.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're not, we're pretty far away from actually putting a shovel in the ground, probably two years away.
Okay. Next question. Uh, that's the next thing I was going to ask you. The, the sewer moratorium that took effect, that's been in effect since January first, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, back then, in January twenty-two, we could do five hundred thousand gallons per day. And then it got reduced by a hundred and twenty thousand per day as of January first, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, I also, so we lost a hundred and twenty thousand, we're down to three eighty for the whole town that we can do. I checked with Mr. Avery, and he spoke to Allison, and the moratorium's still in effect. They, you know, nobody's saying, hey, we're opening up, we got this. Just make you aware of that. Could, could you give me the rough numbers, I don't know if you have or not, of the septic and sewage at that sixty units, sir?
So the sewer will probably be around twelve thousand gallons a day.
That's, that's, that's your estimate?
That is based, actually, um, we had a meeting with the head of the, um, WPCA.
Okay.
And that was, um, and I've also talked to Steve Sullivan of CCA.
Okay. I did some rough numbers, and this is back of the envelope. Uh, I happened to do it when I was speaking to Mr. Avery, the sanitation engineer. Uh, tell me if this sounds correct to you. It's sixty units at two people, and these, I think these numbers are low, but sixty units, two people. Um, you got a hundred and twenty times a hundred and fifty gallons a day, that's eighteen thousand gallons per day, or six million, five hundred and seventy thousand gallons a year. That's that math. At three people per unit, it's twenty-seven thousand gallons per day and nine point eight five five million. And probably the more realistic one is four, because you have different sized units.
Well, we have more studios than our other places. And if, and our, um, was nine thousand, um, gallons per day for, for phase three, which is fifty-three units.
That's the one across the street?
Yes.
That's what they're averaging out?
Um, that, well, it's not built, finished yet, but that's what the engineer came up with.
Okay, I'm talking later on down the road, they've been there two, three, four years, families have come in and finished.
Yes, in buildings, the first four buildings we built, Yes, in buildings, the first four buildings we built, we came in much lower. The the usage is much lower than what the P S W P C A guidelines are.
Okay, um and then the last number, which I I think is a little more realistic, and I'm talking after, it's been there for a few years. Uh and that's it, an average of four, some have bigger families, some have small. Uh but basically, you got thirty-six thousand gallons a day or thirteen point one four zero million a year. Um that's the numbers that I came up with.
Okay, they're not right.
That's that's okay.
Yeah, I have a question. Is is this something about which we have to make some judgment?
No, not really. I'm just trying to get the information.
You're correct, and we have an engineer to do that before our application for the W P C A.
And to me, obviously relevant, because this has to go before W P C A, as their own commission too.
Right.
Doing Z B A needs to work the hardship.
Right. I'm glad you mentioned that, Fran, but here's my relevance on it. Why why are we, and I'm still trying, I'm just trying to figure out. If somebody, let's say for some reason, uh we approve it today, it's fine, it's standing, everything's good to go, why would we go and give an approval on a project? Okay, and he may not end up being the eventual owner if something doesn't work out with the sale, because the sale's not right. But why would we go and give an approval on a piece of property that's there for life, forever, eternity? When we don't know what's going on and if they can even build it and tie into the septic and the sewer system? That's what doesn't make sense to me, and that's the relevant part.
Because the use variance and the regulations, the use variance shall be granted where, without the use variance, the property would be rendered valueless. And that's what this property is right now.
Okay.
I think it's that and safety, two things, two big things.
I presume the the approval would be contingent on the project.
Well, that's.
Or it could be made so. I mean, it could be, you know, the variance could be granted contingent on the specific project.
I, at this point, do we need to?
Whoever actually is the implementer of the project.
Um here's my next question. I know I did ask you last time, sir, but did you bring a copy of the potential possible sale with Mr. McCarty?
Yes, the contract, yes.
All right.
And I have a folder for you. Yeah, the folder and the papers.
Thank you, sir. Were it just copies of them?
Those are copies, you have the the contract.
What's the date on this?
So there's a co- co- contract, and there's a den, uh addendums to the contract attached.
I might want to, I'll see if I can search in there and check it. What's the date on that?
So the original contract was probably signed by the conservator.
Yeah, right. Did it say twelve?
But that's no longer in effect.
The contract's still in effect, though.
Through the conservator?
Yes, he, no, he bound the owners to the to the sellers, plus the addendum would have been after.
We're going pretty far afield here.
I know, I think we are, it's not under our review.
Well, here's the important, something that came up last time was was the uh whether or not we had the approval from the owner.
We we put a stipulation last time, and I think that was good enough. It it can, our last variance has a stipulation in it. Today, we're just continuing on the same variance.
The variance based on the seller property.
Well, it's already there in the last, it's already there in the last variance, right? So today, I think we should just, it's it's, I think it's a continuation of last um our last meeting.
Do you know if there might be a new power of attorney in effect for Mr. Uh?
I've heard, but I don't know for a fact. I deal with John Leary, who's their attorney.
At last week's um, I think it was on Thursday. Zoning meeting, there was a application for a zone change. Uh we could probably ask Fran about it. But on that application. It happened to be on another piece of property, because Mr. McCarty owns three pieces of property in the T C D.
Correct, and two of them have serious violations, and the board is like, we're talking about that next door.
Okay, um this.
I'm sorry, where did you say what?
Two of the three properties that the McCarty's own have serious violations.
Serious, okay.
So just to give you an idea, here's from the title report. All those markers are cease and desist from the town or environmental um violations from the state. All of these, there's a dozen of them.
I I just wanted to show you this, cause I was gonna pass around, sir, but so this is the application from last week, and down at the bottom, there's his wife's signature as a power of attorney.
Yeah, but I put that property's eight fifty-four, and she's one of the owners of eight fifty-four.
Well, but she broke.
Oh, power of attorney, okay.
This is not relevant.
The ownership of the property and whether the property's sales are not is very different.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're ready to vote. I think we're all um, you know, in that point, at that point where we're.
I mean, this is a real problem of property for the town, and has been for decades.
Yes.
Not only because of the um, because of the pollution, but because they're not good citizens. They um, there's most of those cease and desists are because he's digging up the ground without a permit, or he's putting in sewer pipes without a permit. It's all kinds of violations.
Well, and and it strikes me the most, well, aside from the obvious benefit of getting rid of a blighted spot, there's also the clear issue of of the hardship extends beyond the property, potentially into other properties and into the potentially into the act.
Yes.
I mean, we have a, this is an urgent problem. It needs to be corrected. You know, it seems very clear.
Okay.
Safety of Brookfield, Brookfield, you know, met town people around that property, absolutely.
You you got it, I'm gonna move on. Okay, do you have anything for us, sir?
I'm just gonna see this.
I think I've said everything.
Okay.
All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the application.
Well, I will, since it's it's under our new guidance, I'm not supposed to speak during our closed deliberations. I I think it's a great project, and uh I think it would be wonderful for the town, and it clears up a major problem. Uh I think, and the hardship is clear, so I think it should definitely be supported.
Thank you. Frank, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Okay.
Richard Briggs.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and.
Nick Bartholomew, uh I own a property at twenty-seven Station Road.
Mm-hmm.
Um I'm, I am for for uh developments. Um I'm not against developments, but uh when I look at this project and the surrounding project around my property. It looks to me that they are overbuilt. Um if you, if you drive through the parking lot and the and the project that is already complete.
Cross the street, yeah.
There is not one parking spot. I mean, you can go during the day, during the night, during the weekends, there is not one parking spot. Now, he's tried to develop another project that's gonna be twice as as bad as the one that you already done. There is two more buildings going over there, that again, the parking is an issue. And he's gonna build another one that the parking's gonna be twice as as bad. How can you justify, unless you stipulate in your development that all the apartment, they're gonna be occupied by two people? Eh, you have under under parking spots for under twenty apartments. Eh tell me, make, you know, it's like under, you know, sixty apartment, under twenty spots, and you have under pa- under parking spots. Where the rest is gonna go park? That's what I'd like to know. Besides, the 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 other issue is, oh yeah, we we have a contaminated property, and this is gonna make a miracle for all the neighbors. The property's being contaminated, I I've been in a contaminated property, and we are engineers to clean this this property in the past. I had property contaminated, which I purchased and I didn't know. So we had hired the environmental people to come and clean up. The property's been contaminated for forty years. You think these chemicals, they they still on the soap, it's scratching the surface. The chemicals are already down. There's nothing else you can do. It's spread out throughout the neighborhood. Oh, we're gonna contaminate this, we could, it's already done. What's contaminated is contaminated. I mean, if you wanna start cleaning up from this property all the way up to whatever he's talking about, north and west, you can keep on going for months. I mean, it's eh, this is all to me a bunch of, we're losing focus. Brookfield, I mean, oh yeah, we're gonna bring a two hundred thousand dollar worth of tax revenue. The revenue comes from from business, not from residential, especially for a project like this. That we already built a a Aquaberry school that is overfilled. Brookfield School needs more room, the middle school needs more room, we're closing the central school, and it's gonna bring more people. I mean, eh, seems to me that, I don't know, you're supposed to be here to look this issue before any application. Eh and, oh yeah, we're gonna long and, yeah, let's keep on building. I mean, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. Um would you like to respond?
Sure. So the the secret to for cleaning this up is to take out the hotspots. And that's most of the cost, is take out the hotspots. Then we will monitor for a number of years. It depends on how the monitoring goes and what we find, but it probably will be ten years. And the the once the hotspots are gone, the L A P expects the that to clean over time, the rest of the the lots and the lots and the and the area, the whole area. Um as for parking, here's a um a site that we it requires ninety, we're gonna put in a hundred and two parking spaces. So that should help. Also, at the current location, we have about sixty work, sixty construction people there a day, parking in those lots. And that hurts parking, but it's temporary. I think that's the issues. Anybody else have any final questions?
No, I think I I hear those concerns. Um I think there are, I I don't know if those are things that we can control. We've already approved the plan. Um and now this is just, I would say, almost a technicality, because we, it was just, it should have been um presented to us before. And um I I don't know exactly what commissions or our boards need to approve the park for parking. I know that there's an assessment that's done before.
That'd be the zoning commission, because the application is yet to come before the zoning commission, so.
So that's that's not before us right now. What is before us is to finalize the plan that we already agreed.
I concur. Me too.
Questions? Um final question, easy. Okay, on the brand new application, um this is it. That's your signature, sir, right?
Yes.
Okay, um this separate letter, which you signed as the owner, again, on this application.
So I signed in the wrong place.
Okay.
Okay, but it clear on the top, if you look at the first page, it's clear, right, who's who.
I got you.
And you know, the question is, and I said this last time, owner of what? You know, you're saying owner of the property, it doesn't say that on the form. It says owner. And so I'm, I interpreted it as owner of, I'm signing for owner of the applicant.
Okay.
Which I believe would be correct.
Owner of the applicant?
Yeah, the applicant.
And that's mean of the application?
Of, I'm saying of the.
Brookfield Willett Station, Royal Estate, yeah.
Yes, correct.
I was just gonna ask you if you have any concluding remarks, sir.
No, I'm good.
You you can keep going.
No, that's it, that's all I got to say.
Okay. This needs to go over. This is beyond the post paper.
Do you wanna go over?
The letter of the son.
I I look, I don't know what specifically, if you want to bring it up now, I can.
All right.
Bring it up, I don't know.
Man, where's the uh, okay, here it is. Okay, um just, I'll just bring it to your attention, sir. We invited the landowner of record, a legal landowner of record, uh Mr. McCarty to come here.
Yes.
Um to the meeting and to show up to the meeting. However, we goofed. Um and we forgot to, you want me, want me to go over this with you, Fran?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Uh we we didn't check to return uh signature, confirmation signature required on this, and we have no idea if he even got it, if it was just junk mail or got thrown out. It's right here. There's my.
So the bigger picture, though, is they haven't responded to light ordinances, they haven't responded to cease and desist.
I think we own.
Letters, they haven't responded to the the state regarding environmental issues. They're not gonna respond to this.
I think it established that, yes.
Well, the problem, the problem is this, okay, and I I figured it would be a lot easier after what happened at the last meeting and a couple of phone calls with the with the owner. Just have him here, and he can just answer the questions remotely, in person, it didn't matter.
One question. But I thought he established that the owner is not, at this point, capable of, that's why he's given his power of attorney to his wife and to the attorney.
Well, no, we don't know that. We don't, I, well, let let me finish.
But it's not our job.
Yeah, this is something we can go over and discuss, but I checked, there's no power of attorney on record here at Town Hall. I haven't seen it, I just asked the other.
So that affects eight fifty-four, doesn't affect this application?
Well, no, power of attorney is power of attorney. There's about twenty different checkmarks, you can see which you want.
I was not notified by his, his, their attorney that that can't confirm as power of attorney. I.
All I'm saying is we, all I'm saying is we don't know, that's why we invited the owner to come here.
And this is checkmark certified mail, which there's no return receipt, but we have no idea of knowing he received it or not. For all we know, he received it, and he's not responding.
It it could be that, or it could be you got thrown on a junk mail, but when you send a certified legal document, usually it's signature confirmation required.
I can't control the post office, I don't know.
No, that's not the post office, that's whoever brought it down or filled it out. Um that's, that's it, okay. All right, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z dash twenty-three dash fifty-two.
So moved.
Now a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Listen.
We have to deliberate.
Yeah, yeah, you you can say, sir.
Oh, that was just, that wasn't.
Yeah, it's not like a special meeting one where you have to come back home, that's another special.
Okay.
You can have to listen to us.
Okay.
If you want to listen to us, fine, you can leave if you want.
Okay, all right, so right now, we're gonna go into closed deliberations. We discuss amongst ourselves, and it's open to the public. So I will take a motion to approve Z dash twenty-three dash fifty-two.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
I second it, okay.
Discussion.
I think it's a continuation. We've been through this, we've all voted for it. It was just a technicality, like Lisa said. I'm all good with it, ready to, ready to vote.
I I agree with you, I think it's, we've already approved the variances. I I know that you personally, Alan, have some issues with the landowner of record and whatnot.
Because of spoken.
Right, but the uh I, the main issue with that, I mean, what is the what, what is the worst harm that you see happening of us approving an application and then him refusing to sell or whatever? That the land has a variance that goes unused? That that doesn't seem like a big detriment.
Well, look, well, here, it is a detriment. Well, I mean, when we give a variance, it stays with the land perpetually, no matter what we do, and no matter who buys it, no matter what. It just stays in the land forever. So if if we don't know whether or not, or at least hear from the actual uh homeowner, the landowner of the property, how can we make a decision without speaking with the rightful owner?
That's. But I I guess I'm asking is, if this rightful owner chooses not to sell, what harm does us granting this variance do to the property? Just because he continues to own it? It doesn't, he can't do anything with the variance.
No, the variance is there.
Right, but that variance would then be.
It's there.
It would be there, but it wouldn't do anything. It's not a harm to the town because we approved a variance that went unused.
No, I understand what you're saying. I just feel more, a- after my prior conversations and not getting anything else in writing, the conservatorship. The judge threw out the conservatorship, so whatever legal thing was there before, it doesn't mean anything. When a judge throws out a, is that correct, Mr. Temple? If a judge gets rid of a conservatorship, it's over, it's ended, right?
The contract is still valid.
If it was signed in our conservatorship?
Yes.
Okay.
In any case, I think what we would, what you're saying is that Alan's perjuring himself, and I don't think that that's what.
No, not at all, not at all.
He's coming to, that, we've discussed this, you have to tell the truth when you come in front of the board.
Absolutely.
He's telling us the truth.
I, yeah, I I'm just waiting for what the doomsday scenario is, that if everything that you say and believe about this property owner is true, and we accept the whiskey hysteria, how does that harm us or the town of Brookfield, that we've granted a variance that now just?
We've granted, well, we've granted a variance in direct contradiction to what the property owner told me over the phone twice to do.
But then it doesn't.
But but it's not about the property owner, it's about the land, is it not? This this variance is for the land.
Variance goes for the land, but the land is owned by the property owner.
But not the property owner. No, but the the property can change hands. There could be five owners that come on the property, but the variance stays with the land. And the land is in trouble. That land is impacting not only the the property, but it's impacting everybody else.
Well, an- answer me this, you own your piece of property in Brookfield right now. I, I wanna say, ah, you know what, I wanna get a variance on a piece of property.
Yeah.
Can I just go and do that? Without talking to you?
Okay, that, I think that's not the point here. The point, I think my, my position or my argument is that the variance does not go with the property owner, the variance goes with the land.
Right.
Today, we are granting variance to the land, so the property owner is not an important part of this conversation. The conversation that we're having right now is, where does the variance go with? The land or the owner?
Right, but you're, you're completely throwing out, and I, and I understand this, 'cause we did this in the last meeting, but you're completely throwing out.
Well, we all agree that the property owner in, is not able to come in front of us or communicate in a, I don't, I don't, I don't know the diagnosis.
I don't agree with that, but that's why I wanted him to come here to the meeting.
Okay, you don't. But, but your question, I think, I think all of us are trying to say the same thing, is that if the variance stays with the land, it just passes on with the land to whoever it is, the property gets sold to. What is the harm in that variance being with the land? Because this variance is helping Brookfield, the town of Brookfield. It is bringing, you know, it's, it's a safety concern, all of those things.
But maybe it's bringing in undesirable people who can't
Yes.
um, necessarily meet the income thresholds that you would prefer.
So you would say, uh, do, grant the variance?
I'm sorry, to the land.
Could you say, Lisa, I, I- I, I'm worried that this is pretext for just not wanting more people in our, you know, quaint country town. And I just feel like that's-
If I hadn't talked to the property owner on, on the phone twice, I, I, I'd fore this a thousand percent.
Which, which, which we understand, that, that was not, you know, usually you get to talk to-
I would. If I hadn't talked to the property owner on the phone twice and he told me exactly what he did, I could, I'm not gonna pull it out and remember what he said. Said invalidate it. I don't want it. I talked to Mr. Rothman, me and my wife, and said, we don't agree with what he wants to do. That's the long and short of everything that's in that packet.
Okay, so then-
If I hadn't talked to him on that, sorry, sir. If I hadn't talked to him on that, I would feel the exact same way that you do. But I, I figured the easiest way is to just get clarity and invite him.
Clarity on what, Alan?
Well, clarity on what the-
That this man, listen, this man is, and I, obviously, he is not all there. He's got problems. We were told in other properties that he's had, he's, he's negligent and, um, I, I don't understand why you want a disturbed person to say yes, sell the land.
Okay.
Or, or, 'cause we wanna grant a variance.
I understand what you're saying. Uh, uh, and you're saying a disturbed person, but when I talked on the phone, he didn't sound disturbed. I, I dealt with that in the past, and I know it could be different. It's okay.
Exactly.
I mean, I could change too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thi- I don't think we're gonna change each other's minds.
Yeah, sorry. Do you want, uh, were you guys gonna do the same stipulation as before?
I think that was not right.
You can't, no, that's it, no.
Yeah, right, so we should, I think, we've already, so I think, considering this is a continuity to the last variance, we should just vote on it, and, you know.
Alright.
Let's vote on it.
Alright, as is. Okay, here we go. All those in favor of approving Z dash twenty-three dash fifty-two? That is, um, twenty Station Road, Brookfield Village Station LLC, Edward McCarty residence. And this is for a request, I didn't get the percentage in there, but it's about a thirty-six point six six six, 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 six percent, believe it or not, that's the number. Increase to twenty-four additional units, um, s- uh, for three dot one for F and G. Say aye.
Aye.
Well, let's close, say aye. Nate, congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
No, thank you. Alright. Uh, old business, new business. Ah, Adam Secretary, did you get a copy of? Let me get it out. Okay, um, new businesses, non. Discussion on new draft amendment to ZBA bylaws. This was, I wrote it up, and it was, remember when we had the, um, appeal of the ZEO? Uh, came in front of us, and at, at that particular time, let me find, I had the draft up here in front of me. Okay, there it is. At that particular time, I had to do a little bit of homework, and I reviewed, reviewed it with the town attorney, and I reviewed it with the ZEO and the entire land use office, just the, the set of procedures I'm talking about, Fran. And I ran it by the attorney that came in front of us, Mr. Marcus, and he liked it. And that was one thing that I noticed, is we did not have anything for appeals of ZEO in the bylaws. So what I did, and we can look at it and, uh, read it, or whatever you guys wanna do, but I just took, did you guys, you guys have their papers?
Okay.
I just took the exact verbatim what I did for the, um, appeals of the zoning enforcement officer under, that was, uh, kind of like road property. And just put it in here. I'll read it out loud. So procedures below, this is appeals of the zoning enforcement officer's ZEO, procedures below. And Fran, you can weigh in on this if there's any-
Do you have a copy of that? I'd like, is there a copy of that?
So, it's exactly what I read out back when we did it, but, so the procedures shall be followed and written in the record at the beginning of the hearing. When adjudi- adjudicating appeals of the ZEO, uh, we must hold a public hearing, review the case de novo, Latin term for new. Uh, we must give fair consideration to both the applicant and the ZEO without favoritism. We must consider all the facts and evidence submitted and use our best judgment when rendering a decision. Um, and we may uphold in whole or part, or reverse in whole or part, the decision of the ZEO. Four votes are required to reverse wholly or in part the decision of the ZEO. Does that sound familiar, Fran?
Yeah, yeah.
Does that sound good to you?
Sounds good to me.
That's the ones we ran by attorney Schellenberg before that particular application case that came in front of us. She, she liked it, and then-
As long as the town attorney's good with it, I'm good with it.
Yeah, she's good, and, and the first attorney that came in front of, Mr. Marcus, he didn't have a problem with it.
I don't like Mr., well, Mr. Marcus wasn't the town attorney, so.
I, I know, I know. He was the one that they came in front of during the case. I asked him if, if this was spared.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just had a question. Um, we are adding this section because we-
Well, there is no, there is, we have no procedures for appealing of the ZEO in the bylaws, which is really procedures. It's nowhere in here.
But is that a standard thing that, eh, is there usually in bylaws of zoning board of appeals? Or is it something that we've come up with? That's my only question.
No, bylaws of zoning boards of appeals, Carl, you can go with us too, basically cover every single procedure in what we do.
Right, I, I think, I believe the reason it's in there is for the same reason the section above it is in there, which is the order of hearing.
Cases.
Cases. It's basically just so that any, again, new members to the ZBA in the future are, don't have to scramble kind of like we did when the, the case can be forced and say, okay, what the heck are we supposed to do?
This was my scramble.
Okay, so let me just say, you went into what was already included. Yes, you did.
Well, I don't know, yeah, I, no, I don't know if it's the right, if, if it's the best place for.
Yes, it is. Town, uh, Brookfield Board, this is me.
Yeah.
And I added, I added, um-
I went at the very end and just added a sixteen.
I added Lisa's, alright, just listen for one second. I wanna understand this because I didn't understand, I didn't know that you invited the owner of the property here. I didn't know that.
I didn't know that either.
Okay, so that was something that was done.
You didn't know that?
No, I didn't know that, no.
I thought they had a copy of that in the, uh-
No, I think, there was no email, no. So that was a surprise for me. But number, that, getting back to the bylaws.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't even know.
Yeah, that wasn't in everybody's package? This is my package.
No, but if it was, um-
No, no. You're the chairman, I think you sent it to the office, correct? You didn't copy the other board members.
Well, I didn't send that one. I just sent an email request, and that's the one that Barbara Schellenberg had, had written up.
For?
She had Amy write that up, and I asked for it to be hand delivered and sent certified return receipt, but for whatever reason, it just got sent regularly.
But does, does something like this need everybody to say yes or no? Is something like this just the purview of the chairman, or do you need other board members to be part of it?
With that. Oh, to invite somebody? Well, that, that's, that's my option.
That's your option.
Yeah.
Alright, so the thing is-
Didn't, didn't matter anyways, it didn't come.
No, no, it's, it's all good. If it's your purview, it's fine, yes.
Yeah, but my, 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 uh, um, point is, I thought we were supposed to all know about everything, and now I don't.
Yeah, I thought that was gonna be in everybody's packet. I don't know why it wasn't in everyone's packet.
Alright, so now, let's get back to the bylaws. I handed, I, I ended, I inserted all of Lisa's, um, changes.
Yep, that's perfect.
We all agreed, we all agreed on that, and then you went in to this, you went into the master, I would think.
I don't know which one.
And you put, yeah, it says right here.
Okay.
'Cause I specifically put on the bottom.
Yep.
Um, you went in and you added this to the master?
Well, as a draft, as a draft.
No, this is the mast, this is a master.
I don't know what the master is. I just went in, I went online.
Masters was uploaded on the website.
Right, so I just took that, printed it out so that I could do that in there, to make a draft, to present everybody here.
Alright, so then you're saying Town Hall doesn't have a copy of this?
No, nobody has, no, nobody has, that's why I explained it on the front of this document.
So, um, does the zoning board, um, the zoning commission have something like this? So the reason I-
Well, they have bylaws, but no appeals.
No, uh, but, but this, uh, particular section about enforcement officer?
They don't handle appeals.
They don't handle appeals. All the appeals from me come to ZBA.
Yeah.
So that is something that is needed to be put, I mean?
Yes, in, in the, yes.
Alright.
Yeah, it's a good, I mean, if anybody later on comes down the road, they're gonna have to, like we did, scramble at the last minute and go, how the heck do we, I've never dealt with a, a appeal of a ZEO. I didn't know, I had to research it all. But at least, they haven't.
I guess Janet, I, I tell the, from understanding what you're saying correctly, as the secretary, that you were feeling a little bit out of the loop?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, well, I apologize for that. I wanted to, before, nothing has to get changed. I wanted to, everybody to look at it.
I mean- You can't control everything, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
I just made a draft. You mean, call you up and I should have done the draft?
You could have emailed me and said, please put this in, and I think we should all know that. I, I think that was what we discussed, that everyone should be part of whatever changes there are, whatever votes there are.
That's fair enough.
I mean, we are a team here.
Right.
But that's fine. It's done if, as long as this is done right.
No, nothing's done, 'cause it doesn't go in there, 'cause it has to be voted on, so nothing's done. It's, I just consider this a draft. I should have asked you to draft it, so I apologize for that.
Okay. But this is not a draft, but that's okay. That's fine, that's fine. I'm, okay, whatever. Okay.
Anybody have any questions on that one? Would we like to put it in?
Okay, possible reorganization of title numbers? Is that what you're referring to?
Well, that was the next thing, yeah. And this was, I wanted to leave it completely up to you, but I didn't know, I just willy-nilly printed it out and said, oh, what number we're on? We're on sixteen, so I did a sixteen. But maybe, it may not possibly be in the right order. I figured you could look at it and say, you know what, this would be better if it's moved up to there.
Okay, I could do that.
Yeah, this was just a draft language of how we appealed the ZEO.
And the table items? Oh, that's-
Oh, I'm gonna get to that now.
So we've been getting to approve this?
Yeah, we have to, yes, okay. So, Mr. Vice Chairman, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, ZBA bylaws as amended in the recent draft.
Adding the-
Adding in the section sixteen appeals of the zoning enforcement laws.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And then, yeah, the last one was, if we did approve the draft on this, I didn't know if that's the right place in here. And you were definitely the best person to look at it and say, nah, I wouldn't put it there, I'd move it somewhere else.
No, no, I think, um, I mean, I think Lisa, as an attorney, I think she would say that it's not in the right place, but she does-
I think it's fine where it is. Thank you.
Well, that's easy.
So that's, that is easy. So, okay, let's move on.
Okay, um, table items, there's none. Informal discussion, I had one tiny thing, but, uh, do anybody have any formal discussion?
I'm sure you promised you mean it's tiny.
Oh, it's really tiny, it's actually good. You ready? Alright, apparently, I'm not sure, but we received, the zoning board of appeals, all eight of us, received a very gracious compliment from one of the applicants at the last nine eleven meeting, and I, via email, but I didn't see it, and I was gonna see, I was gonna ask the vice chairman a favor, see if he could follow up and find that email, 'cause I believe it went to Mrs. Barkowski.
What, what do you mean, find the email?
Well, ask Mrs. Barkowski. Well, I wanted to share it with everybody here because it was, it was a compliment on, uh, I, I don't know, I never read it, but from one of the applicants, but I wanted to see if, if you could follow up, but I just called, it went to Mrs. Barkowski.
Well, the irony of what he's saying, right?
Okay, so you want, I-
I was just gonna ask you a favor.
Ask, ask her to what, forward the email to us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I never got anything. If, if nobody else got anything, nobody else, yeah, nobody did. But anyways, I thought it was something good, somebody that complimented us, I thought, we should all know about it. And that is it.
Alright, he's gonna, oh, do you want to adjourn?
Vice Chairman.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.